Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Mayesville Board of Commissioners Monday, June 17th to order. We'll begin with invocation Reverend Burton.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today to thank you for another day that you have given us. God, thank you for God's community, God and the city that you have blessed us with, and those that serve, our elected officials, and those that worked within our city, and God to help us, to keep us from report, reportage. Pray blessings on them, their families. God, pray for this meeting this evening. God may the work that is done here be used to unite us, to grow us stronger. In Jesus' name, pray.
Thank you Reverend Burton. Roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Here.
Commissioner McKay?
Here.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes ma'am.
City Manager Wallingford?
Here.
Attorney Wright?
Here.
Controller Adasta?
Here.
HR Director Rose?
Yeah.
Project Coordinator Horton?
Here.
Public Works Director King?
Here.
Police Chief Palmer?
Yes ma'am.
Fire Chief Carpenter?
Here.
Utility Manager Spence? Zoning Administrator Larger?
Here.
Building Inspector Fawcett? Code Officer Brooks? Tourism Director Bailey?
Here.
Main Street Director Reese?
Here.
Thank you. Minutes of May 9th regular and 22nd, and June the 3rd and 7th, special meetings and department reports.
I'm moved that we accept as presented.
I'll take it with question. Matt, on the check register for Baldwin, it was on here?
Uh huh.
Sixteen thousand for additional audit, what was that for?
That is for... That is for the audit.
The twenty-three audit.
The twenty-three audit. Not the one that will be doing. It's the one that they're finishing up right now.
Okay, but it said additional.
Additional on top.
They've been billing us based on work being done. So, we've paid them like three or four checks throughout the year since they started doing work. So, that was just the additional up there and they've got to break down on stuff. And again, I don't know if it says additional because again, some of those descriptions could be based on what we enter.
I thought maybe that was a final payment, so it's not a final payment.
No, I've got one more on my desk right now.
Any other? Roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes ma'am.
Public announcements?
I just have a quick one. We probably won't meet again before the 4th of July. As you know, the city puts on a nice day for everybody. Fireworks, the fire department does a really great job of that. We have bouncy castles over there and the inflatables at Rotary Park, two bands down at Limestone Park, big parade, big day for everybody. So, thanks to the public works because that is a lot of work. And for what you did last week for the concert, and there's a concert the day after that. So, y'all will be really busy. So, thank you for all your hard work, I appreciate it.
Kickers and Grinders is now the 29th. There's been a change to the calendar, so we posted that on the Visit Mayesville Facebook page. The Green Dot Walk and Run, .5K will still be this weekend, June 22nd. So, as always, go to the Visit Mayesville Facebook page because all the community events are posted there.
Thank you.
Tomorrow, Bill Henry, Kevin's father-in-law is going to be doing a prayer thing for Kevin at the Mason County Football Field at 7:00 p.m. So, anybody who wants to join us and pray for Kevin, please come.
Thank you. You said Mason County Football Field, right?
Yeah, Mason County Football Field at 7:00.
Public comment? The Mike Thomas Scholarship. In memory of Mike Thomas, he gave a lot to our community over the years, especially to the arts in many different ways. And he touched a lot of lives and made a big difference. And one of the things that he served was on our city and county arts commission. Here from the commission is Jackie Sue Wright to make a presentation.
I'm also on the arts commission and we had several very talented applicants. They were all very deserving, it was a hard decision. But we would like to present the scholarship to McKinley Stevenson.
Would you like to share a little bit about what your goals are and how you're going to use your scholarship?
I am planning to go to Belmont University in Nashville, Tennessee. I'm majoring in commercial music, which is like performance and country, pop, just all kinds of different things. And I've been in the performing arts for 10-plus years. I was actually in the Mayesville Scott Talent last year and I got second. So, that's how I found out about the scholarship.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appointments, Fire Department Captain, Fire Department Lieutenant, Police Department Social Worker, and Public Works Skills Labor. Let the fire department go first.
This is a memo to City Manager Matt Wallingford, Mayor Cottrell, and City Commissioners from Fire Chief Kyle Carpenter. Jared Appleman recently completed all requirements to be promoted to Fire Captain. Jared has excelled as a lieutenant firefighter, paramedic, and has the drive and leadership skills we are looking for to manage our department. He holds IFSAC certifications for firefighter one and firefighter two, fire instructor one, live fire instructor, and fire pump operator. I highly recommend Jared's promotion to Fire Captain.
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes ma'am.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes ma'am.
You want to say anything?
There's a few more people here than I expected to be. I don't have much to say. It's an honor and privilege to not only serve the citizens of Mayesville and Mason County, but work next to everybody in this room. I think I'll probably encounter everyone at least once and I will continue to do so. So, thanks for the opportunity. Thank you.
Again, a memo to City Manager Matt Wallingford, Mayor Cottrell, and City Commissioners from Fire Chief Carpenter. Kyle Ferengin recently completed all requirements to be promoted to Fire Lieutenant. Kyle has excelled as a firefighter, paramedic, and has the drive and leadership skills we are looking for to manage our department. He holds IFSAC certifications for firefighter one and firefighter two, fire instructor one, and live fire instructor. I highly recommend Kyle's promotion to Fire Lieutenant.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes ma'am.
There's a swallow hazard there.
Like Jared said, I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity. Extremely humbling just for the partnering often to choose me to be in this position with a great group and to be in this department. I hope everybody in this room realizes how lucky this community is to have the department we have. Like I said, I didn't have much to say, but I really appreciate the opportunity and I hope to live up to it.
A memo from Chief Palmer? I'm sorry. To Honorable Mayor Cottrell, City Commissioners, and City Manager Wallingford. Worthy commission, I am writing to formally request the appointment of Ashley Messer as Police Social Worker with the Mayesville Police Department. Ashley has successfully completed the hiring process outlined by the Mayesville Police Department, demonstrating her qualifications and dedication to this role. Ashley possesses a strong desire to contribute to the field of police social work. A native of Brown County, she graduated from Brown County High School and went on to achieve cum laude honors at Morehead State University, obtaining her bachelor's degree in social work in 2015. Furthermore, Ashley is a licensed social worker recognized by the Kentucky Board of Social Work. Over the past nine years, Ashley has served within the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. Her experience in this field has equipped her with invaluable skills and insights that will undoubtedly benefit our police department and the community at large. Throughout the hiring process, Ashley has consistently demonstrated an exceptional character and was recommended for the position from all those contacted in the background investigation. I am confident that she will make a significant and positive impact, not only within our police department, but also within the broader city government and among all residents of Mayesville. I wholeheartedly recommend Ashley Messer for the position of Police Social Worker and request your consideration of her appointment. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Respectfully, Michael Palmer, Chief.
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes ma'am.
You're welcome to say a few words if you like.
I just wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity, Chief, which is a chief, and the one that was involved in the process. And I'm a good addition for the city. I think everyone will pay the benefit, um, to go rather than like just come by.
I have a memo from Public Works Director King. I would like to recommend Roger Hodge to be hired as a skilled laborer for the City of Mayesville Public Works Department. Roger will be a great asset to the city having his HVAC license as well as years of electrical maintenance experience.
So moved. Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Reappointments, Board of Ethics, Adam Burton to fill the unexpired term of Andrew Young, term to expire 12/31/24. Stockton Wood to replace Tim Garpercamp, term to expire 12/31/26. Code Enforcement Board, Aaron Cowles and Dawn Renee Brooks, term to expire on 2/10/27. Arts Commission, Alex Narwitz, term to expire 6/30/28. Port Authority, Tammy White to fill the unexpired term of Kendall Gully, term to expire 5/31/25.
Who is that Alex, who?
Narwitz.
Pardon?
Narwitz.
Oh. Yeah, I know who.
Should be in your packet.
I didn't, I shouldn't catch you. Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes ma'am.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes ma'am.
Budget session.
Mayor Commissioners, first I'd like to have Lisa Britson on a call we had with Lead of Cities regarding an alcohol regulatory thing. I think we did that, but go ahead.
Yeah, um, they, uh, we met with J.D. Chaney from KLC and Megan Griffith from the Alcohol Beverage Commission. And they both agreed that we were able to do this. And just, you know, gave us a little bit of ice, make sure that we watch our Ps and Qs and, you know, have all our ducks in a row. I did look back at my records. We have 10 more licenses this year than we had five years ago. So, that's how fast this is growing and how much more work it will be for police, for me, doing administration with that many more licenses, as well as, you know, the EDC went into effect in 2019 as well. So, those are the reasons we're having this increase and more of a need for funding to take care of these issues.
Is any questions for Lisa on that? Another, I think you were asking me the last time about property, the property tax numbers. I did get those and I did run the numbers, what it looks like for the next round. We're currently, we currently have a compensating rate which is .158. And the numbers that I ran, and I talked to Troy Craycraft, and he thought they looked good, the preliminary numbers. The compensating rate would go down to .152. And if we were to take the, and we won't do this now, this wouldn't be until next month, late next month. If we were to take the 4% increase, it would go to .159. So, if you took the 4%, it would go from .158 where it's at right now to .159. And from what I could tell, Mayor Commissioners, that would be revenue in amount of $40,000, $40,640 over the compensation, which roughly about a million dollars every year. When you take that rate.
And if not, you just keep it the 1.5, right?
No, it would go down, it would actually go down Commissioner to...
1.52.
.152. The revenue would remain the same as previous years. One thing I want to start, and I gave this to you all in the email that I sent to you. One thing we need to make a decision on as part of this budget. You know, we had talked about the National Fitness Campaign and their program here. If we were to participate in that financially, I would recommend $50,000. We're still looking at about, we got a $30,000 grant. Still be looking at about $195,000 for the project. The city's been working closely with the fiscal court, the YMCA, and the Health Department on this project. There is a local grant that we would like to go after, that we're still working on collectively, that would actually come from the YMCA as a nonprofit organization. It's who it has to come from, so, and that could possibly be the entire 195, which would be, I'd be tickled to have that.
Are you saying to wait on them, or what are you saying?
My recommendation would be to wait on it. Kind of wait and see, and if we needed to come back and possibly amend the budget, we could. Commissioner, you got any thoughts on that project, and have you been working closely with it as well?
No, I thought your application was pretty good.
Yeah, I just need stuff that I don't have in my head to get filled out and then we'll get that submitted and, you know, keep our fingers crossed. Maybe we can get that entire amount and nobody's got anything. And we, two locations that again, we'd be looking at would be the YMCA and the Red Park.
It really fits the criteria of the organization that we're sending that money to, or an application to.
Yeah. I'll come back down to the pay scale ordinance. But I think first we just, we need to make a, we need to make a determination on where we want to go for the budget. If there's a pay raise or not, how you all want to look at that. If there are any other questions on budget items, and then we can jump to the pay scale ordinance.
Matt, is this, is the threshold...
Yeah.
It's part of the budget? Your recommendation on that, or will it...
Yeah, I mean...
Or will it be voted on separately?
Well, you'll do a separate, you'll vote on a budget and then you'll vote on a pay scale. Those are two separate items that you have to pass prior to July 1st. So, I have to have two readings on both of those. Those are two separate ordinances that we are required to pass. We've been, we've given everybody a copy of the proposed pay scale ordinance. And from my understanding, from Rhonda and the FLSA standards, there's about nine or 10 individuals that are, that would qualify for that threshold that are currently under the threshold.
Correct.
Correct?
Is that a requirement to pay?
No, it is not a requirement. So, what would happen is anybody who is currently a salaried employee, if they were to remain under that threshold, will become an hourly non-exempt employee. And then obviously subject to overtime pay.
Do that make, do they work that much overtime?
Well, here's what you got to look at. Anybody that's salaried is working 37 and a half hours. So, they're essentially going to have to work two and a half hours in order to get to that 40-hour requirement before overtime is required to be paid. And it just, it just varies on, you know, they're mostly administrative positions, depend on, you know, monthly meetings, things like that.
Is there a standard or something that the government uses to, that helps you determine if people qualify under that or do not?
Yes, it's your job duties and you would have to meet the requirement of the job duties, which all of them do, but also whether or not you want to move them up to the threshold. Because if we don't, they'll just, we'll just change, or they'll go back to non-exempt.
But that would automatically raise them?
Yes, it would be. It just depends, it depends, some of them are close to the threshold, some of them are not.
So, what would be the most, some of them are not, would be...
I would say, and going off the top of my head, to that 58 roughly thousand threshold, there's a couple, it'd probably be anywhere from 10 to 12, does that sound about right?
Yes.
To get to that threshold for January 1st.
And that automatically increased January the 1st, correct?
Yeah, it'll increase July 1st to 40...
Forty-three eight eight.
Thank you, 43 eight eight eight, and then on January 1st to 58 six fifty six. And then the way I understand the law, at least at this point, every three years, it's to be adjusted again, is that how I understood that? That answer your question David?
Yeah, I was thinking the 43 eight 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 went to 58 six fifty six.
It will.
It will.
It will, that's the, that 43 eight 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 is the threshold effective July 1st.
And then January the 1st, it goes to 58,656.
Yes, correct, thank you.
On the pay scale that you gave us, does that give you the flexibility needed to get a utility assistant manager hired?
It, well, yes, it does. The pay scale for that is...
Eighty to 105.
Thank you, eighty to 105.
And with that, and if we did the threshold piece, would, that person wouldn't, if they got that increase, then they wouldn't get another increase on top of that?
Okay, hold on, I'm not following you. Are you talking about the assisted utility manager position or the other ones?
Just in general. So, in general, if, if somebody fell within the threshold?
Right.
And let's say that person got the 10 or 12 jump that you were talking about? And then the pay raise that we're talking...
No, if, my opinion would be if that jump is above whatever you all allow, then no. That would not be on top of, because they would be, they've been getting it already.
Okay.
That's how I would see it.
Okay. Well, I don't think I'm in favor of the threshold right now. Not to say that I wouldn't be some other time, but with the deficit that we're looking at right now, even though you say it's going to come down, that may be something for me to look at later. That's my opinion. My opinion on that is I had to address that five years ago at the University of Kentucky. And if that's the job responsibilities that they're doing, and if it meets the federal guidelines, then I think it's our obligation to pay that.
I wish we had the University of Kentucky budget.
Yeah.
See, I, we just need guidance on that because that, you know, that way we can adjust what we were given to you if we have to, when we go for the first reading of a pay scale. So, I kind of need a consensus on, you know, where this pay scale is that we gave you and what adjustments may need to be made there.
And I didn't have the luxury of a full university budget day. But I had a grant budget that fluctuated every year and I had to go through the same scrutiny that we're going through.
Now, I will say that, I don't have, yeah, there are, well, again, it's dependent upon what kind of raise you all would authorize. Some would go above the threshold because they're close, correct? Isn't that right? Was there maybe three or four that were close?
Less than probably a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah. So there, there possibly some would go above it with, with a potential raise. Some would. But the, I would say the majority will not, at least, at least not the January first threshold.
Well, can we kind of separate out, since the budget and the salary scale are two separate things? Can we do, let's say, can we go ahead and do the, uh, see if we can get a consensus on the salary scale?
Sure.
So that we can?
Yeah, let's stay on that, and yes, and yeah, we'll get a, yeah, we, we need a consensus on that. So I, I need to know, you know, we, we need to know the FLSA, where, you know, whether yes or no on that. I need a consensus there. So yeah. That's where I need to start.
At least we had one thing.
We'll try to get one thing knocked out, and go to the next. We'll keep rolling. Okay, I got Ann's, I got the Bears.
I, I don't think I would support that.
Okay.
Yeah. I will.
I can.
Okay, so we'll, we will then change to, some of them won't change.
Correct.
Some of them won't change, but we'll have to change the ones that would.
I still think I put, um, a range in there that it wouldn't have to be changed. I'd have to look at them again.
Okay, here, we, we'll just make this easy. The bottom line is, we're not taking anybody automatically to the standard of, um, of January one. Now, s- most will go to the standard for six months, probably. From July one to Jan-, possibly, depending on whatever is authorized. Yeah. So you're saying the, the range is still good?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
We got.
I, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, but I, you know, understand where you're all, the, the consensus there on the FL, FLSA standard. Now, we're, okay, are, are you good, is everybody okay on that pay scale? Just, again, that's just pa-, that's a pay scale. Doesn't mean that's, you know, just cause you see a range there, doesn't mean somebody's gonna be at the top of that range. There's wiggle room in there, as always, in case there's a qualifying event for somebody to get bumped up later on. That's why you have such a large range there. So we don't have to come back in here, is the key. Whatever, whatever percentage you all authorize is where the individual would be off of what they're currently making. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so let's go back, let's, let's go to that. That, and is there anything else in the budget that you want to discuss, that's in the proposed budget?
So did you get a consensus on the salary range?
Yes, yes. We're, we're, we're not gonna, the FLSA, no, there's no jump there. It'll, it'll, there will be jumps above the standards, depending upon if there's a raise. A raise could take somebody up automatically. They would go, they would remain salaried and not be out of it. Some may be out of it. I know it's kinda confusing, it confuses me. Okay, the budget. Yes, Commissioner.
We spoke, we, we, we talked a couple, about two, three months ago, maybe, about curbside recycling. I think that, at the time, the consensus amongst the board was to go back to it. And I didn't see anything mentioned in the budget.
It's cause we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a truck. We have to, that's why we didn't, hey, I would love to, you know, let me tell you why. Because right now, whoever's wrong, well, here's the problem, though, if we go back to it, what are we gonna do?
We don't have a.
We don't have anybody to sort it, that's the problem. Remember, that's, that was the reason why, would love to, because I think we could do that for, once you have all the equipment on an annual basis, by having cost of what we're paying right now.
So they all sorted the landfill anyway?
Everything is, uh, they've got separate bins for.
If you take it out.
If you take it out there, yes ma'am, so.
What if, uh?
I would love to.
Would Rumpy take the mix from us if we collected it? How much would that cost?
So like a large quantity in a dumpster?
Yeah.
Yeah, like if we took every, if we were, I think we kinda talked about this. If we were able to find a way to dump it into one of their.
I'd have to check and see what containment they have, you know, that we could put it in. Right now, those containers that you see out at Public Works, they all get dumped in one truck. And then they go to the recycling plant. So it's all getting mixed in with, you know, whatever's in that.
It's mixed all good. We would have to, we, we'd have to have a truck. And then we'd also have to figure out, how are we gonna dump that truck into whatever container they would provide, because they have to be able to dump that into their truck.
Can we follow up on that?
Yeah, I mean, the curbside would be great.
Yeah, cause you've got paper.
Cause then you know, you're taking care of your, you got everything.
Tins, you've got bottles, you have to have three, how many separate containers?
Well, no, we wouldn't, Ann, if we were able to do it that way, cause they're taking it all together anyway. It's, it's not separated now. If we were to take it to the landfill, yeah, it would have to be, we'd either have to be manually separating it, or.
Why that stop? I don't think that would.
Cause they don't allow inmates to do sorting anymore, it's a facility.
But that was a great service. That was a great ser-, who doesn't laugh?
The Department of Corrections. Yeah.
He did a good job.
Yes, he did.
Yeah, they had a death at the facility out there.
I mean, they really did.
Well, and COVID kind of knocked that out too. But yeah, then we know, we're, we're totally, I mean, I know we're IDing and that, but we know it, we were definitely taking care of our citizens at that point.
What would be about transporting it directly to the closest recycling?
It's up.
Georgetown.
Is it Butler?
It's.
Well, it's.
Is that where it is?
I was gonna say, I am not a recycling expert by any stretch of the imagination. But is, what is wrong with maybe letting the consumer do it? You know, if, if, if they wanna recycle, then you have to put your bottles here, your cans here, your paper products or however. No, I think in a lot of cities, you see bins that have three different sections. And they have to do it themselves, and if it's not done right, move on and it goes to the landfill.
Yeah, and we, we've talked a little bit about that, about pop, cause one of the biggest issues we have is people not breaking down their boxes. And maybe designating, what'd we say, three bins out there just for cardboard, and then everything else could be, could be for, uh, whatever, you know, your bottles, your paper and all that.
I break mine down, it's just easier to put it in the trash can. You know, I don't.
So is there money in the budget for a truck? Did we, or did we not include that?
No, we did not. I mean, you, we, we talked about it, did we, did we?
Would there be money in the reserve?
Well, yeah, I mean, there, there's money there, but.
I didn't specifically put an item in there.
No, no.
So how many runs would you think it would take per week for recyclable, with what you're seeing out there?
I would say we'd probably have to staff two people five days a week. Or if you wanted to do it Saturday, too, we'd have to have at least.
So you're saying you're gonna, you have to take.
I think what you're asking, Lucas, how, how often?
How many trips you'd have to go to Cincinnati per week to take it?
Oh, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Some of these guys were here when they did the recycling curbsides, and they probably might know a little more about it.
Like you remember?
Oh, yeah, it was, it was every day, you'd have to pick up the cycle.
You had to run every day.
You had two guys full-time, eight hours a day.
Well, I think, especially staying in a CBL truck. Yeah, you're looking every day.
That's picking it up, but.
Picking up, yeah.
Well, yeah, I think what Commissioner Grammer's asking is, when we're full, how, how?
When we're full?
Yeah. How many loads?
What they were saying is, every day they got full, and they had to go dump. But that was with a truck?
That was the, with the recycling truck that we had.
The truck, yeah. The truck, we hit it with recycling truck.
Yeah.
And it was, it was a total mess, but we didn't go around, drive around. We stationed it, and then we'd come back that day, and it'd be hot up around.
Yeah, but then, but we had a truck after that, that we, that we trucked around.
We had a truck before that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember the truck.
We had a truck before that, but it would, you would have to run it every day.
We probably had to dump every day, I'd say.
Every dump every day.
And that's when you, like you said, that's when they sorted, you just pour the recycling center, and then they sorted.
Yeah, the only time you'd go to the top of the hill is if they weren't sorting. Cause there was nothing we could do with it. We had to take it there.
Well, how's others, smaller cities like us do that? I mean, our population's size, I know you can't go, but.
I don't, yeah, I don't have an answer on that, Commissioner. You know, obviously, the closer you are to the larger cities, with the, have the recycling centers, it's a lot easier, um, to do. We would be, I mean, we'd be happy to try to get you a number on, on, uh, on a truck and, and trailer, what that cost would be, and whether or not we'd have the ability to, to either take it up there, if they would allow. If they would allow us to come to their facility. I mean, I'm sure they're gonna charge a fee, but we could find out what that is. Or if we would have the ability to dump it somewhere at our side, cause I know we kinda talked about that. We'd be able to back up off the cliff and, you know, dump it and, and what that cost would be versus what we're paying now, which I think is around forty thousand dollars.
So people bring recyclables to landfill now?
Yes, they do. They do.
They still have a separate place they can do that?
Yes, ma'am. They sure do, and, yeah.
So we can't take it to our landfill if there's, if it's separated when it comes out to the Public Works? If you had a bin for paper, glass, plastic, and it's all like that? We can take it to our landfill?
We can. I think the issue we run into is the amount of time that we would be spending taking it out and putting it into their ones.
Well, for the sake, for the sake of time, though, can you put something together, bring it back to us?
I, I got a question about it.
Yeah.
Is it possible, if we did do a recycling program, to have those that have to do community service and those that are serving time in our jails do the sorting?
That's the problem. They won't allow that at the recycling center to treat it anymore. Yeah, they don't allow it.
No, no, not there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not there. Somewhere else.
I don't know what that would be.
I mean, it would be free labor, then we'd be giving back to their community, and it would eliminate needing two full-time employees working forty hours a week, plus benefits, retirement, and all the extra to serve. I'm just throwing it out there.
I, I like it. I, I like, I like that kinda labor, absolutely. We'll talk, and we'll come back to you.
Just checking.
Yes, ma'am, we will. We'll come back to you. Was there any, what, any, anything other besides, uh, pay, anything else in there that you all had questions on, or? Nicks, add, anything like that? So then that's the last, the last item would be, um, you know, we, I don't wanna say we've beaten a dead horse, but I think we've beaten a dead horse. Let's come up with, let's come up with a solution here. Cause we got a lot of other business to get, to dig into. But I can't make that decision. That is, you know, that is up to the five of, at least three of you have to come to a consensus.
I'd like to propose to commission the three thousand dollar raise across the board for everyone. And that gives people on the bottom end about ten percent. And it gives, uh, everybody else up to sixty-two thousand, about five percent. And it gets, uh, seventy thousand's get about four point six and a half percent, and so on and so forth. And then you get three thousand, which I think was comparable to what they got, what you all got last year.
So David, repeat that. You said up to what would be ten percent?
It looks like, uh, well, the ten percents are the lowers, like the eighteen dollars an hour. But, uh, all the way up to, um, uh, thirty dollars an hour is, uh, your five percent would be a thirty-one twenty. So that, that, near, it would be a little over three thousand. So everybody gets, everybody gets a boost all the way up to there. I mean, gets over, uh, three thousand.
Yeah, it's slightly above five percent that I suppose, so it's whatever, whatever gets, whatever gets the little guy and middle guys the money.
And that's what I've heard from the people since it started, is we have to pay more to get, to bring the lower employees up.
That's not true, though, because we can't get an assistant utility manager.
Cause what?
We can't get an assistant utility manager. That's not a low-end job. We can't afford that cost, so that's not a truthful statement, but it is a statement that helps.
I think we can probably get a utility director at some point.
Tom.
I mean, you add three thousand, you add three thousand onto this, and there's gonna be somebody out there that wants that job. I mean, that's.
The job's been posted, has it been posted out there?
Yeah.
The job, job's been posted for almost a year.
I keep hearing.
The job's been posted for a year.
Yeah.
We've had a handful of applicants.
And I'm gonna trickle off that. I'd like to argue for the department heads that are sitting in here, who bear a lot of responsibility for this city, a lot of responsibility. When things go awry, things go awry, it's on their shoulders. And I think they deserve equally what anybody else gets. They, they put their time in, they put their heart and soul in. Those department heads work extremely hard, and again, they are responsible for their department. And I think they are just as much deserving as anybody else to have a higher percentage of a raise. They've earned it.
Well, with this, they get three thousand dollars, so.
I understand, but if, if you look at.
Which is comparable to what they got last year.
I, I can't answer that one, David. I, that I, I can't answer, but my point is, you know, they work, everybody here works extremely hard, very hard, good people. And, uh, you know, to me, to them, to those department heads, that's kind of a slap in the face that you're saying they, they're not as deserving of a percentage raise as, as, as others.
What I'm saying is, there's people that make nothing here. That's what I'm saying.
And I get that, and I, and I, I know, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. I'm just, I'm saying my piece that I think, I think those department heads deserve it equally as well. A higher percentage raise. They, they work hard.
Well, I tell you what, after this next quarter, I think what Victor talked about is we can revisit this after we see what our industrial development, uh, successes or failures are going to be. What our employment figures look like, and I have no problem with raising people up after that.
Sure, sure.
But I, I just think that we're in a real difficult situation right now. And, uh, some people are looking at our surplus, and I remember when we had a sixteen million dollars in the bank before the recession.
That's what we have now.
And it, uh, yeah, but it evaporated to nothing.
Yeah, we don't want that to happen.
And we got three years, people worked without any raise at all. They just worked.
Yeah. But you can't balance a budget on the back of an employee. I mean, you can't.
But we're not.
I know, but let me go back to Commissioner McKay, and I think he mentioned this at the, at the, I might throw him in.
That's okay.
At the last meeting, about possibly five or six now across, and then three to four January first.
Well, I think that was.
And we, and we make a, we review, and we will come to you and say, hey,
Yeah.
this is how we're looking. This is where we are. And to initiate that af- after six months.
Well, I tell you what, let me make a motion, and let's go for discussion, if I can get a second.
Whatever you want, yeah, what's yours?
I'll make a motion to get three thousand across the board to everyone.
For the sake of discussion, I'll second.
Okay, all right, go ahead. Okay. All right, go ahead.
Commissioner McKay, did you have a, a compromise that you were talking about last time? I mean, was that your compromise, a certain percentage this year and a certain percentage at the beginning of next, or?
I just.
What was you were thinking about?
Yeah, I mean, after hours and hours and days of sitting in here, I just proposed five, five or six. I would prefer five. And then we'd look at the end of the year, maybe the first of the year, at the, at the Consumer Price Index, which is three point four. And if, when this, everything sells and we can afford it, then they, then we could talk about that then, if the vote.
We did that before, right? Did we, did we split up the rates?
We did, we split that. We did a one and a half, then none of their half.
Yeah.
And did that work?
That was during COVID, though, or during the COVID years.
Might have been. Yeah, but we have done that before.
I guess sort of the concern is that, is that our, our whole budget is set up so that revenue is supposed to match what we spend, and all of a sudden, revenue is not matching what we spend, and we're looking at this increase. And so, I understand all Commissioner's attitude is that, you know, is there something broken? Is there something that we're not doing that we should be making more money than we're making? Something's out of Kiliwak, it seems like, and I, I, I'm not sure that we have the full, the full picture and I, I, I trust your judgment. You gotta live with these numbers all the time, but I also appreciate, uh, Commissioner Caroll's, you know, comments as well.
Well, I think it goes back to the, I, I think I mentioned this the last time. We've got all these projects. You gotta have equipment to do the projects. You gotta have building material to do the projects. That's all skyrocketing. And we're still lagging behind on compensation. To get the quality individuals and to retain the good people that are in here, the wages have to go up. Where we're not, where we're not, where the, where the expenditures are taking over on the revenue is we haven't increased our our revenue amounts. And when I say that, I'm, and I'll just say it, we have not, we increased taxes. Well, we haven't. Um, we've been able to get by with where we are. And when you, and, and the kicker here is when you start looking at utility costs, utility rates, our sewer rates are probably where they should be. Our water rates are not. We've got water projects that we're gonna have to do, and we're lagging behind. And if we go to do, uh, if we go to get loans from KIA, they're gonna look at our numbers and say, okay, you gotta raise your water rate by X percent. My point, Andrew, is that the cost of everything has gone up. Um, the cost of keeping, retaining good employees and getting good employees has gone up. It's just, it's the nature of the beast, but our revenue hasn't kept up with that. We're fortunate, very, very fortunate, that we've all done a hell of a job over the past umpteen years to have the reserve that we have. And, and that's kudos to everybody in this room, everybody. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify, those aren't just reserves sitting there. A lot of those are dollars committed to projects. So it's kind of a false thing to say we have that much money sitting there. And, and then you do have to have some reserve in case something happens, so that you can continue to run the city and have police and fire in case of that. And David, you didn't mention how, how the income side of that, only the expenditures. And I think that is something, since I've been mayor, that we haven't really done any year. We've looked at cutting expenses, but we've never looked at the revenue side of it. And I think we'd be amiss if we didn't at least, uh, put some kind of plan into action to resolve that side of it as well. I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. Point taken. No, I was just gonna add. I, I think this, I think we have come, and we are moving in the right direction, especially the last can't speak for COVID. I know they went one point, what, one and a half, then one and a half, three, and then nothing. And then five point eight, five, and five. So I don't have a problem with five. I mean, I don't know what the county's doing, and I know, I know people are saying, well, we don't care. I don't care, I don't care, but the college just gave a three percent. I know the county's probably not going more than four. So I think, I like David's proposal, but I, I can also live with mine at five percent with, and we look at the end of the year. I mean, I think that's reasonable, but with no commitment, though. I mean, I'm not saying I'm gonna vote for three in December or January, but either or, I'm good with either or, but I like the five percent, but, uh, because David put this piece of paper and it's, they're, they're, they're close, but it does, his proposal takes care of the low and middle end. And that was mostly the, uh, argument, was we need to take care of those that are coming behind Greg and all everybody, so I'm good with either the three or the, or the five, and then we see where we are.
Five percent on an eighteen dollar an hour worker is only, uh, eighteen hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
A year?
Yeah, yeah. Which is, I don't know if you can still get people for that.
Can you do through, I mean, would you entertain three now and then the CPI in December?
Okay, that's fine with me.
I mean.
To look at it in December.
Yeah.
That's another three and, that's, that's nearly another four percent favorite.
Are we talking CPI, are we talking about CPI that would come out in December or?
The one that just came out.
December.
Yeah, I thought it came out March or April.
It's the three point four at the end of last December, so.
Well, I'll let you know which one we're gonna go with.
Well, you're just saying, we understand what you're saying, but we're saying we could do this and then look at it in December.
I'm only asking too, because there's a considerable difference between the previous year's CPI and the current CPI. The previous year's CPI was seven, the current year's is three point four.
Well, I think we need to compare.
There's a big diff, what I'm getting at is, though, is like, if it's, I mean, if it's two point four, I'm gonna tell you what the three point four, but if it's seven, I'm gonna tell you what the seven.
Sure.
To be honest, but I'm just saying that, are we talking about, what we know right now is the option of people, or there's open options, it sounds like, for seeing what it says for the CPI.
That, I mean, that's, that's up to the, that's up, it's, this isn't Vic McKay, the city of Vic McKay.
Well, what if we just say you look at what the CPI is in December?
But I'm not sure that I understand the connection between the CPI and, uh, the cost of living here and the housing cost and all the other factors that figures into the decision that we're trying to make.
I'm just going, I, you know, like I said the last time we were here, and I think I've said it several times, the CPI is what is the Consumer Price Index is what is offered to the elected officials. Those of us who choose to take that.
Right, sure.
Uh, so I, that's why I brought that up. I thought it, you know, if it was good enough, good for the goose, good for the gander, so that's why I proposed last week, five, then three point four, or now David's three thousand, and then whatever the CPI is. What if it's seven? So there's.
I, I am good with the five percent, and then look at it in December, what the CPI is at that time. That doesn't necessarily mean if it's seven percent in December this time, you have to give that, right? I don't think so.
Well, if we go down that road, I think we have to think that we have to look at more than just the Consumer Price Index. I think we have to look at where we are with the city budget, where our employee situation is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You have to, we have, that's.
We have to look at where we are in employment. That's what we have to look at.
So I don't know. I don't, I, I don't know where we are. Five or three? What do you, what, what are you leaning towards?
I'm okay with the five now, and, and look at the.
And then looking at it.
Three or three and a half. Midway through the year.
Need a motion on that?
No, you've got a motion at a second.
Well, you got one. You got a motion at a second, so.
So you'll have to vote, we'll have to call a question, vote it down or whatever.
Roll call.
Commissioner Brammer?
So are we voting no on this one?
Well, if you don't, if you don't like the three thousand for the lower people, vote no.
But we're going to the five percent and then to look at it later.
The five percent now is only eighteen hundred dollars for the, for your bottom level, bottom tier employees.
See, or we could do the nine point five for everybody, yeah. I see what he's saying, but I also agree that I like the people who are not making that much to be up to more. I don't know how you get around that. I'm, I'm just saying, these are, I'm, I'm not trying to.
I'm saying.
Well, could you do that, Rhonda, if we raise the, uh, the lower scale on the salary range, if we raise the scale up?
Very, I don't, I don't think so, Mayor. I think you have a question over, over here.
The three thousand, which is great for the lower people, but you're kind of penalizing us that's been here for twenty years, fifteen, twenty years. You're, you're penalizing us on that. So I, I don't think the three thousand is really fair.
It'd be good for you, too. Yeah.
It, it would. I mean, it would, but it's not, if, if you like to penalize us that's been here for a long, three and a half.
Well, you.
Then we worked up to our.
Yeah, you'd be getting, you'd be getting five percent. Yeah. So.
But I'd really have nine and a half.
Well, I know.
Well, I ain't gonna lie to you.
Okay, we got him.
We're gonna be here on, is there a motion?
Yeah, we, we, hold on, hold on.
There's a motion.
We have a, we have a, we have a motion.
Can't you just rescind that?
Well, David perhaps, I think he wants a vote on, on, you wanna vote or you wanna rescind your motion?
Uh, well, you'd have to withdraw the second. Let's just vote on it.
Okay. So what's, what you're doing in here is, this is David's motion for three thousand, across, three thousand dollars across the board. So if you want the five percent, you would vote this, vote no, yeah, and then somebody would make another motion.
Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Was there not, you didn't include, uh, CPI in yours?
He didn't.
The three thousand five.
Oh, well, we could go, we could revisit it, yeah.
Does he need to include that in his motion?
Well, we gotta vote on this no one, bro.
It wasn't part of the original.
It wasn't part of the original motion, Commissioner.
Yeah.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
No.
Commissioner Carton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
No.
Commissioner McKay?
No.
Mayor Paterle?
No.
Okay. Now, does somebody wanna make a motion?
A motion for five percent.
And.
And we revisit.
There you go.
And revisit.
There you go, there you go.
The Consumer Price.
Towards the end of the calendar year.
Towards the end of the calendar year.
Why don't you do the three thousand with the, uh, with the revisit CPI?
Yes, I, that.
The three thousand?
Three thousand with a revisit in January or December would be amazing, because you bring your lower guys up and give them some munchies.
You know, I must be having a stroke, because is that not what, is that not what I asked him to put in there? I mean, I don't have a problem with the three thousand.
No, well, I think you talked about both of them and was kind of confused.
He didn't add. I rescind my motion.
Yeah, I could, okay, I couldn't, I couldn't add it. I couldn't change the motion. I could make another motion
You can make another motion.
to do the three thousand plus, uh, and revisit when the CPI, and, and, and we'll know a lot more about, about our employments then. I hope the state will pull through with us and we'll see.
So, repeat that motion.
So you're voting on three thousand dollars, and then we, we, we look at the CPI at the end of the year. If you vote this down, and we have the other option is five percent, and we look at the three point four in December.
And you still have, you still have.
Yes, that is correct. I mean, yes. So David's saying three thousand now, look at CPI later. So that's, that's the new motion.
And you could still make raises from your.
I'm only making raises on qualified events.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, I'm not doing a merit raise.
Yeah.
Every time a raise is given, you guys have given a copy of it, and why the raise was given.
I think that's what we want.
Absolutely, that's what we've been doing.
So what's his motion?
David's motion, Ann, is three thousand now to every employee, and to revisit towards the end of the calendar year a CPI raise.
I wanna go back to.
Hold on, let me finish, Mayor, let me finish with Commissioner McKay, she's got that.
At the end of the calendar year.
Towards the end. We would look at the budget and consider a Consumer Price Index raise. So.
More than nine and a half now.
Well, and that's not, that's, going that way is not exactly, um, but I went back and read the minutes from the last meeting, and that's a little different. I mean, are you?
I said five or six, and, and the CPI, I, I said that last Friday.
Yeah, and that's what Kevin's, what Kevin's made, and that's what he's said.
But if you're doing that now, or are you doing something else now? I guess I'm confused.
We just, I mean, we're just looking for, I, I made that proposal.
Yeah, he just proposed.
David's making this proposal. He does, I don't know if he has the votes or not, but if he doesn't have the votes, then I'm gonna come back with what I just tried to do, so.
So you didn't make a motion?
No, I did.
I rescinded.
Yeah, I made my motion with the CPI. I need a second.
I, I'm trying to be clear on what you're doing. It's three thousand dollars.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm just.
That's okay.
The three thousand dollars, and then coming back to look at the CPI, but Victor's the same, five percent raise, and then looking at the CPI.
You got it.
November, so what the hell are we doing?
That's what I, that's what we're trying to make, not any.
Well, I guess the way I would sum up is just saying, to David's point, the one way takes care of the low end, puts them up, and to another employee that was here last time that spoke up, or as Matt was just saying, the five percent across the board treats everybody equal.
Well, would you take care of that?
Takes everybody equal for the level of work, and the stuff as Matt just said, that we put up with as managers or seller employees. We can always argue that it's never gonna be equal, because no one's ever gonna agree to agree that I should get paid more than you, or you should get paid more than me. But it's just two different ways of looking at it. Your end takes care of half of the population.
Right.
The five percent gives a pay increase.
Well, it actually takes care of about, I think, seventy percent of the population.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, in our world, we're losing the mid-levels to high levels. We're losing the people with experience that's in here. So you're not helping them and giving them a reason to stay. You're giving them a reason to go. You just said they're not working. You wanna help the lower. So like, we're getting a medic that's been here five or six years, but it's not the medic that just showed up. Because we're seeing they're not getting that job. We're getting them trained in the, I want to say with the police. He, he's been having people leave that's been, what, four, five, six years on the department? So I feel like you're not fixing that problem or, or you, I can't speak for public works. There's a lot of people that deserve that three thousand. I can't argue that.
They're still getting four and a half, five, five percent. I mean, there's, you know.
Man, where's, where are we? He made a motion.
Yeah, 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 yeah. David made a motion. Need a second, and then, no, we had, we, he made a motion. There is no second.
No, there's no second.
There's no second.
There's no second.
So unless somebody's second, if there is no second, it dies for, for lack of a second, basically.
But didn't we just say to give Victor to send, to do the five percent, and then look at the three thousand?
Right, that was, that would be, that was gonna be his.
Yes.
No, that, uh-uh, to look at the three point four later, not, has nothing to do with the three thousand.
Right, it's different. It was a different.
It's three point four.
But then could you do the five percent now, and then look at giving the people the three thousand?
No.
No.
You'd have to find a cutoff point and tell us who gets three thousand, who gets five percent. I mean, you'd have to find that cutoff point.
Well, I think what, we have to look at the bigger, the big picture here, so, you know, if we do Victor's at the five percent and the three point four, whatever, looking at that again. And we'll be looking at the index if you wanna do that, but we also have to look where we are with employment. Are we solving the problems like Kyle was talking about? And, and as David mentioned, the funding, if we get that in, so there's all those pieces. We have to look at all of that to make the decision.
Okay.
Come January.
Right.
Okay, yes, so, right now, if there's no second on David's motion, it dies.
It's there.
Or somebody can second it and you can vote yea or nay. However you vibe with you when I handle that one, I can't, can't do anything on that one.
It's been five minutes and we don't have a second. So is there a formal way that we do that?
You can always say go on, go on twice.
Yeah, you say it dies for lack of a second.
Dies for lack of a second.
And it will die, all right.
Be set.
Here, take this and go, die for lack of a second.
I propose a five percent pay raise effective July first and then we look at, we come back and visit in December for consumer pricing. And see if, and see if we can afford it then. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Well, I'll second that.
Okay, you got a second. Discussion or roll call?
Any discussion?
Can we get to participate in that discussion? Okay, just question, I just, I'm not interested in this, I wanna do math.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cartwell?
I'm gonna stick to my guns, no.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good journey.
Well, no, we got, we got to rescind it, got the pay scale out of the way, I've got the budget out of the way, is there anything else? Because before we go into our other items, I need a date, like within the next couple of days so that we can do a first reading.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
Do we need to discuss income?
Yeah, absolutely.
The twenty-five dollars to the fees?
Yes, yes. The, the payroll tax, we'll, we'll do that, we'll look at that, uh, in about a month. I think last I heard from Troy, those numbers have to be in by the middle of August, we'll have to have two readings on that, whether it takes compensating or property.
Yeah.
Excuse me, property, sorry.
Burn it down, burn it down.
No, sorry, 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 property, excuse me. We'll do that in about a month.
Okay.
Um, the proposal in the budget was to increase the occupational license fee to, from seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars.
Okay.
So we need to know if that's what you want us to incorporate in the budget because we will start that July first.
Are we just raising the minimum or are we also raising the?
It would be point zero, point, zero, zero, point zero nine instead of point zero seven.
Point, no, it'd be point one.
It'd be point, point zero one.
I mean, sorry, point, yes, point one.
That's your question, either the vast majority pays seventy-five dollars, that will go to a hundred dollars angle.
But the larger, uh.
Yeah, all versus, large corporations.
Same percentage on the, what their sales are.
I just wanna make sure we don't hurt them too bad, the people actually, paying on the percentage may not appreciate the fact that we've just been paying seventy-five dollars for a long time. I mean, clearly it's time for that to be raised, I just wanna be careful not to throw the baby out with the bathwater, I guess, and, and frighten or hurt monetarily those companies that are paying on the percentage.
Does that affect them to the larger ones?
Yes, yes, no, it would, yes.
How much, how much of a percentage?
It's way, it's over a hundred thousand dollars.
About a hundred thousand dollars will pay more than a hundred dollars, so, I mean, it's just, if, if you make two hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna pay two hundred bucks.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So like, obviously Walmart is probably the big one, Kroger.
Thank you.
And that's on gross sales, right?
Grocery receipts, yeah.
Grocery receipts, if they do it right, grocery receipts here in the city is, if they develop the form properly.
If they do what?
If they fill out the form properly, so Kroger and Walmart, it's the grocery receipts here in the valley, but for contractors that make more than a hundred thousand dollars, it's, it's a hundred thousand dollars here in the city that it's accounted for. But they, they may make a whole lot of money as a corporation, but they may not do that much business here, they may still be able to pay the hundred dollars, not. It's all based on how much work they do here in the city. So if you look at the forms, there's forms that help them get down to a percentage base, that they can take a percentage of their grocery receipts, and that's calculated at the point one percent to get to what they owe the city.
And then you're gonna add in the alcohol fee?
That's what's gonna be my next question is, you know, 'cause we've got a meeting.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, thank you, with.
Newport.
Thank you, who is, who just recently implemented it to pick their brain on their ordinance and everything. And if, and if that's, and if, if you all are good with that, I would, I don't know how quickly I can get an ordinance put together, but I would try to get one put together pretty quickly. If, if that's something you all wanted to implement effective July first, we've got the data, it easily.
And we have, we have a number of model ordinances from different cities that Kelly can look at, we just needed to tell him what numbers to plug in and.
So you're looking at the occupational license fee and alcohol regulatory fee right now, is what we're looking at.
Okay, we did, we do those things.
Cause he needs to plug that into.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, that's what you're asking. I'm okay with the regulatory fee, that's what you're asking.
Okay, what, what, okay, is, okay, let's start with that, alcohol regulatory fee.
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay, so that's good.
Good job, Lisa.
Yeah, good job, Lisa.
She did a great job. Um, occupational license fee, minimum seventy-five to minimum a hundred.
I'm good with that.
Okay. That's all I need for now, we can put numbers together. Go on once, go on twice, anything else on the?
But I'm not sure about property.
No, we.
No, I, that, that, that will, we'll come to that, we won't, I won't bring that to you until, uh, late, mid, late July, probably, so I'll, I'll, I'll come to you there. Okay.
And no payroll tax for me?
No, right, uh, we got.
They'll be, I make no.
We got that earlier. Anything else on the budget? All right, you got what you need, all right? You, you got what you need, you get there, okay, all right, thank you. Whoa, wait, whoa, wait, date, I do need a date.
I don't know, 'cause I didn't bring my calendar.
Okay, how about I reach out to you and everybody in the morning?
Yes.
And then ideally I'd like to do something, today's Monday, um, Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, that could be a people in here on ice water, too. Know what my day is.
I know, I'll look, I'll, 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 I'll get with you in the morning.
I've got the dentist thing this week.
No problem, and we, yeah, we're, we're just doing the, the budget, the pay scale, we're talking a fifteen, twenty minute meeting.
Yeah.
So, or an alcohol regulatory, but you shouldn't lie us very long. Okay, I will get with you in the morning on that. Okay, I think we can continue, Mayor, on the agenda.
Thank you. Resolution awarding the contract for the purchase of fuel for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-four dash three eight.
So this is a resolution awarding contract for purchase of fuel for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Whereas the city of Maysville advertised for bids in accordance with plans and specifications as follows. Fuel purchase for fiscal year twenty twenty-five is, was the subject, it was advertised on May fourth, twenty twenty-four. The bid opening was on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. The following bid was the only bid received, Valor Oil at zero point zero two five dollars, margin above Covington, Kentucky rack price. Whereas the Public Works Director recommends acceptance of the only bid as the best bid and now therefore it's resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky as follows. The bid of Valor Oil for the subject contract described above is hereby accepted on behalf of the city of Maysville and the mayor is authorized and directed forthwith to execute all contractual documents necessary or appropriate to effectuate acceptance of said bid and to consummate the contract, contract on behalf of the city of Maysville, adopted by the Board of Commissioners this day.
So moved.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing certification of local approval of emergency solutions grant for the ION Center for Violence Prevention, twenty-four dash thirty-nine.
This is a resolution authorizing certification of local approval of emergency solutions grant for the ION Center for Violence Prevention. Whereas the ION Center for Violence Prevention provides a value, valuable community service in the operation of their domestic violence emergency shelter. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to sign the certification of local approval emergency solutions grant, supporting the domestic violence emergency shelter operated by the ION Center for Violence Prevention in Maysville, Kentucky.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing USDA, USDA grant application, twenty-four dash forty.
Resolution authorizing grant applications with United States Economic Development Administration and the United States Department of Agricultural, Agriculture for Utility Improvement. Be it resolved by the city of Maysville, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute grant applications with United States Economic Development Administration and the United States Department of Agriculture for Utility Improvement and if awarded, to execute any and all documents necessary to execute acceptance of same.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing lease agreement with Buffalo Trace Area Development District, twenty-four dash four one.
Didn't that one we just did?
No, we did the USDA grant, that was the one we just did, yeah.
Okay. Resolution authorizing lease with Buffalo Trace Area Development District. Be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute a lease renewal agreement with Buffalo Trace Area Development District at two oh one Government Street, Maysville, Kentucky, four one oh five six.
So moved.
So moved, oh, sorry, second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing trust participation agreement with KLCIS for insurance services, twenty-four dash forty-two.
Resolution authorizing trust participation agreement for general insurance trust in Mason County.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, Mason County Planning Commission, General Insurance Services, what it should be.
Be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute the trust participation agreement for the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services General Insurance Trust and also to execute underwriting, renewal, survey, application from League of Cities Insurance Services on behalf of the Mason County Joint Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing a lease agreement with KCTCS twenty-four dash forty-three.
Resolution regarding lease renewal with Kentucky Community and Technical College System. Be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute a lease renewal with Kentucky Community and Technical College System for a portion of the coxvilleing for July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five for rent of eighteen thousand dollars per year.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution rejecting the bid from Craftsman for the dry well project, twenty-four dash forty-four.
Resolution rescinding bid acceptance on water treatment plant dry well project. Be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky that the acceptance of the bid of Craftsman Industrial Services for dry well improvements is rescinded due to the bid winner's failure to obtain bonding.
So moved.
Second. Whoa, what happened?
Yeah, so it was, you said discussion.
Saskatchewan.
So what happened, Commissioner, was we had two bids for the project, Craftsman and Herrick. Um, Craftsman came in a little over a million dollars, but they were not able to get bonded for the project. So what we are doing, we're working with H and B, who's our engineer, to take Herrick's bid. Now Herrick's bid is one point four nine five, is that right, Dave? So it's about four hundred thousand, three, yeah, about four hundred thousand dollars higher, but we need to do this project and we still have a lot of money to cover. So I will, probably whatever special meeting we have, hopefully, um, I'll have a resolution awarding the bid to them. They were the only other bidder. Yeah, I know, I don't like, I like the one point oh six one better than one point four nine five, but we still need, uh, this is a project that we do.
Got it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell? Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottrell?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance authorizing the use of golf carts on certain streets within the city of Maysville, first reading, twenty-four dash oh two.
So in summary, an ordinance authorizing the use of golf carts on certain streets within the city of Maysville, providing for inspection, city permit and sticker, establishing speed limits and required equipment, hours of operation, age and operator's license, and empowering the city manager to make and amend rules and regulations regarding ownership and operation of golf carts.
I will say that within the last two weeks, I've seen five in five different places around town, so they are being used.
I've seen them go across Tucker Drive to Waldo.
Whoa, hold on.
But we're not ready like it with ordinance now, I can't do anything about it.
Was it the streets, Sam, didn't you?
That's what I was, that's what I looked for, and the parking.
That's what I was looking for. They were, they were, in the updated one you sent us, it was in red.
Yeah, but I don't, that's what I sent and that's what I don't, that's not what I see in here.
I'll have to look, is it in the copy you have?
No, 'cause I, 'cause I sent you, remember the roads, yes, that's it, Mr., that's it, 'cause you all also wanted, uh, I'll tell you what, can we, uh?
Sorry, it's Kelly and he said.
Jackie, can we, can we add to that ordinance with what's redlined in here?
Yeah, if you have a copy.
Is that, okay, look, read that and then we'll do a first and second and discuss, is that, is that good with everybody? People, what's in red? Right, what's redlined, but ours is a little different than what you guys do.
But she didn't read all that anyway, she did a summary.
Right, she just did a summary, yeah. So what's redlined, I'm, I'm, flip it over, that's what, well, she's kind of, yeah, it's first reading, so could we, could.
Yeah, this would just would be the.
That's just a summary.
Yeah, but I can use this copy as.
Right.
What I'm introducing to the commission.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
It's just, I had a bad copy.
That's the copy that, right.
Okay, okay, does that make sense?
Yes, this would be the one circuit.
I'll get that back to you, Jackie, I'll get you a copy of that.
Okay.
Okay, you have to get her a copy.
Yes, ma'am, can we get a first and a second and if there's a discussion?
First, I think, so moved.
Okay, please, so Commissioner McKay?
Sorry?
He made his motion, second, my Commissioner Brammer.
Discussion.
Yes, so what I added in there was you, I believe you guys had said it was one of the parking down, the two lots, McDonald Parkway. Uh, Chief Palmer and I went round and round on roadways to prohibit, and those are listed in your redlined copy there. So I think we're pretty solid on that, and again, as, as, as Chief Palmer had mentioned to me, you know, we can always go back and amend it, if need be.
You sent that to me, so that.
Oh, well.
So we're just adopting the X app with, with the red?
Yes, yes, yes. Is that okay?
No, but they're not permitted on Tucker Drive, correct? But you saw.
But you saw.
There's no way, there's no way legally to get to Tucker Drive, because 62 is 45, AA is 45, now Tucker Drive's 35, but how are you going to get there unless you're coming from.
Did you not say you saw them go across two Tucker Drives to go to?
I seen them on Tucker Drive going to Walmart.
Okay.
Returning at Walmart. So they could have came out of the shack or something like that.
Okay, okay.
You know, but that's something that we need to find too.
They can go from the bank to the shack. But they can't go out of 68. Okay. All right, roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer.
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes ma'am.
Mayor Carter.
Yes ma'am. Ordinance amending chapter 320, medical cannabis, first reading 24-03.
Just want to, no wait a minute, we're not reading first, George. If they have any questions, they can reach out to you.
An ordinance adopting and affirming the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and recommendations of the Mason County Joint Planning Commission pertaining to the regulation and zoning of medical cannabis businesses in the city of Mayesville, Kentucky. In the summary, this ordinance adopts and affirms the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and recommendations of the Mason County Joint Planning Commission pertaining to the regulation and zoning of medical cannabis businesses in the city of Mayesville. It creates an amendment to the City of Mayesville Ordinance, Chapter 320, to create Section 320.416 regulating medical cannabis businesses. It creates a new land use chart entry for medical cannabis businesses. It creates five subcategories entitled cultivator, processor, producer, safety compliance facility, and dispensary, with definitions for each. It limits cultivation to A2 and I13 zones. It permits dispensaries in business and community zones. It permits processors and producers in I13. It permits safely, safety compliance facilities in P1 and I1 through 3 zones.
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
No, sorry, I mean, discussion, is there any questions or is everybody okay with that? I thought, I think the consensus was the last time. Yeah, okay, okay.
And I've heard a lot of good times. It's okay.
Commissioner Brammer.
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes ma'am.
Mayor Carter.
Yes ma'am. Ordinance amending, ordinance chapter 201-20, abandoned vacant property licensing in Main Street District, second reading 24-01.
An ordinance amending, ordinance chapter 201.20, abandoned vacant property licensing in Main Street District. In summary, this ordinance amends code of ordinances, section 201.20, abandoned vacant property licensing in Main Street District, to provide that storage of personal items are not permitted on the first floor of commercial properties located within the Main Street District. It further prohibits storage of business items on the first floor of the premises unless the items are ancillary to a business in the building. It further adds section 201.27 that sets forth conditions and requirements be exempt from the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer.
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes ma'am.
Mayor Carter.
Yes ma'am. Close session pursuant to KRS 61.8101F, discussion which might lead to the appointment of an individual employee. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer.
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes ma'am.
Mayor Carter.
Yes ma'am. Yes, ma'am.